Please. Quiet, listen. Start the meeting.
I'm going to be in the Senate glass of the United States of America and into the Republic of the stands. One nation under God, universal, liberty and justice.
Thank you, everybody. Open. You called the order? You, David?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Sir? Any questions on the agenda, guidance? I am going to ask that we pull out eight point oh three. All right. We'll have a perfect refreshment at some point on the next. Okay. No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any thoughts?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for the February twenty sixth meeting.
Any questions on the minutes for February twenty sixth? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? So.
Didn't get it back in.
Yeah. Thanks. Be quiet.
Man, I need a period.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, but it's Brittany. Brittany, are you doing the student report?
Oh, Brittany approved.
Hi, my name is Brittany and I'm here to make the report. And our spring musical that we're working on is Once Upon a Mattress and it's this weekend. And you could come see us perform Friday or Saturday and the tickets can be purchased online. Uh, the high school architecture and engineering and design field trip to Hunt EAS in Rochester is on April twenty sixth from eight forty five AM to one thirty PM. Students will learn about architecture, engineering and design from employees at Hunt. They will complete an office tour, then do a tour of the High Falls area where Hunt is currently working on so many projects. The morning announcements has been running a Dancing with the Teachers competition each month, where each department face off against one another in a choreographed dance. And I can say it's really funny to watch. So far, we've seen performances from the science, social studies and math departments. Next month, we'll do the English department, so stay tuned for that. It will be interesting. The high school page turners team clinched the division champions title at their spring competition on February twenty seventh in Avalon. This amazing group of readers will now advance to regionals competitions in Pavilion on March twenty sixth, where they will face schools from every division in the region and answer trivia questions about the books they read. Uh, the sixth grade spring flower sale has started. Students in sixth grade will be selling flowers from the eighth to the twenty first and will be picked up on the, in the foyer and that will be picked up around the afternoon. The middle school page turners recently competed in their spring competition as well. They competed against areas in school in our region where they are victorious, as noted. Scores from the fall competition are added to the scores from the spring competition to determine which team will compete in the finals. Geneseo's winning scores put them ahead by astounding seven points, clinching their spots in the finals on March twenty fifth. And Leroy, a big congratulation goes out to the team and their dedication for their hard work. And that'll be it.
Excellent. Thank you, Brittany. John has some comments. Yeah?
All right. Good evening, everyone. John, if I happen to, uh, not do anything, well, please feel free. I might add you to, uh, kind of hop in.
Sure.
So is this the full budget tonight or?
No, this is actually, uh, I thought I had the night off, so, uh, this is the tech. Yeah, right. This is the tech budget. So haven't really done the tech budget yet. On the twenty fifth is going to be, uh, the first draft and then the twenty second will be the approval of the overall budget. All right, so here we are. So again, March eleventh, I didn't have it on some of my other slides. I thought, again, yeah, March eleventh was going to be my night off, but it's not in presenting. So this is going to be the tech budget. It's pretty cut and dry. I went through, there's really kind of three components and I really kind of went down through to give you some examples of what that looks like. Then on the twenty fifth, we're going to, again, talk about the first draft of the budget. We'll sit there, we'll go through that, it'll be very extensive. And then the twenty second will be, um, actually, you know, presenting it to you, our final number and where we're at for approval. So here's, uh, my, my goals in terms of our goals, which is the strategic plan on budgeting. And so we have enhancing high, high quality student instruction, career, college and military. We want to support social emotional learning for our students and staff. Three is enhancing and really having some consistent, uh, transparent, quality communication. And then four, obviously, is with me, making sure that we have the funds in order to do it. So here is kind of the proposed budget. And so I want to backtrack from something that I would have presented probably in January and that was the tech budget. And so going down through and seeing a year to year date and difference, it was like, this can't be at thirty three percent, right? This is through the roof. And so going down through, and these are some things that we're really kind of finding. You'll see that last year's budget was six eleven, four eighteen. So I was kind of talking with John. John's looking at me like, Scott, I don't know what you're talking about. Like, you know, that I, I have like five heads. And so really, the actuality of, uh, this current school year was seven eighty six. So again, there's a discrepancy of like a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that wasn't budgeted for that we're pulling in, paying. But those are some of the things that we're finding currently this year. So really, in actuality, the budget for technology is seven eighty six and not six eleven. Okay? So if you look all the way back, it would have been a two hundred and four thousand dollar year to year change. And I was like, that, that just can't happen in technology. We're not purchasing, we're not going extravagant, we're not doing anything out of the norm. And so when you look at this now, it's going to be a three point seven percent and we're going up twenty nine thousand. Okay? So that's just kind of BOSI's costs, inflation, minimum wage, those things going up. There's really not a huge year to year, you know, when we looked at the thirty percent, I think it was like thirty three percent. I was like, something's wrong. Going to find out the actuality, John and I went through line by line. Our total budget this year is seven hundred and eighty six thousand dollars for technology, not six eleven. Our budget next year will be eight hundred and fifteen thousand.
So you're saying the difference between seven eighty six and six eleven in the budget to actuals is BOSI's?
No, I'm saying this was not accurate. That was not a good number that was projected last year. And so what we're looking for is the actuality and the cost is this number. So we've had to absorb that money.
So, okay, so I understand. Are we reviewing budget to actuals on a periodic basis in the finance committee?
This would have been something that I looked at, um, probably back in January and would have presented on. Uh, now when I kind of go the year to year and you see this two oh four, that's why, you know, John and I really kind of sat there. I was like, something doesn't make sense there. So, but again, I just wanted to point out that that's why this is in yellow. This is our actual, this was the sum that is inaccurate information. So there's really kind of three coarser components. You have administrative, instructional and then telecommunications. There's another one that's out there that's really kind of third vendor. So I, I say that's a, that's a plus one, right? So your administrative costs, that's going to be InVision, right? The software platform, that's going to be your, uh, copiers and the, uh, agreement that we have with those. Those are on lease. Parents Square, that's something that we're currently utilizing, uh, for mass communications and hitting goal number three. We have parents or, excuse me, data warehouse. That's something that the principals will use, school psychologists will use, really kind of look at the data to see where individuals are at. That's on three through eight state, um, uh, performance and assessments as well as regions exams as well. Uh, you have region scanning, that's something, I'm not sure if it's necessarily here. Mike, you might be able to help me out. I think it's something in Livonia, it's called just in time scanning. So all of our regions exams and things of that nature, you throw it in there, they scan it, they send it back. Your results are like that. Is it here? Perfect. IEP Direct, that'd be something where, um, it manages and stores, uh, students with disabilities, everything that they need. Our specialized teachers go in there, write the IEPs. That's something as well as school tool, which is our school data management system. So that's kind of like the administrative component. Here is the instructional component. So MIPA purchasing fees. MIPA is a multi-year purchase agreement. Right now, we have a hundred thousand dollar MIPA that we utilize, so every single year we're spending that on technology. That's kind of like where it's not thirty, sixty, ninety, it's very so much like a bus purchase, wanting to make sure that we stay at that a hundred thousand dollars, right? So every single year, it's just being for itself.
Is it a cooperative agreement or just, are we sold?
It's through BOSI's. Yep. Toshiba copiers, again, this is something that we have, we go there, troubleshooting, things of that nature, breaks down, they have to come. VMware, um, virtual machine ware, I think. Yeah, so I didn't really know what that was, looked it up, it's kind of a slick, but I would not know how to do it. But basically, it's like that thing in the rack. Right, John?
Oh, because servers rather than having physical boxes, it's virtualizations. We have one physical box and it has like about fifteen different servers that we program.
Yeah, I, I wasn't really aware. SAA supports. Those are different things, um, that John will send to me that we need and, uh, we go through that. That's in the instructional component that supports teacher learning and student learning. Lake that is obviously your internet fees, Wi-Fi, the access points that are in here and then Chromebooks. So, you know, I think we get like fifty six point six percent of money back. So if you were to purchase a Chromebook at three hundred dollars over those three years, you're probably paying like maybe a hundred bucks for those three years for the Chromebook.
What is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, will we upgrade into Wi-Fi system yet?
We have and it's inclusive of exterior Wi-Fi, um, um, that we added. We started the project during COVID to get, uh, better coverage in the outside of the campus for both school safety, but also the flexibility of learning. Um, but our, our network right now, we still have probably five or six more access points that we can put up. But right now, we save, we kept a couple in our back spot, uh, back pocket for the new space. So we installed it, it there. So for district owned devices, it's, it's very solid, especially in all the instructional spaces. In some places, like in the hallways, when you're going from one access point to another one, it can drop. But we look for high congregation areas like the foyer, cafeteria and we'll boost those spots up.
Okay, thank you.
And then here's telecommunications, so filtering, right? You have fiber line internet, VPN, virtual privacy network. Yep, Wi-Fi hotspots, those are things that we've kind of talked about where we were giving them, uh, students or staff that might not have, you know, internet at home. We were providing those for them and then network setup and then also remote backup, backup. So if something were to occur, it's stored in BOSI's off the grid that we could then have the, these things and bring them back to life. So here's kind of the plus one, those third party vendors. So frontline, you have ASAP. Okay, that's your, uh, how every staff member puts in an absence that comes into, to school. You have Medicaid Forecast Five, which is something from MyLans and budgeting, which is, I mean, it's like Excel on steroids. It's the best thing that I've seen. You have IEP Direct, again, that's something that we utilize. Q Ware, so if something is wrong, this table breaks, a staff member puts it into the queue as it says and then goes to Mr. Davis. They know that they have to, you know, create and, and, and fix that issue. Raptor is going to be your, um, uh, kind of vetting process of individuals that come in. And then Paper Cut is going to a copier. You release your documents, you get them. So that's kind of like some of the third party stuff. Here we go again with plus one instructional cost for third party. So you have a Toby, the VIP license, that's super expensive. Class link that allows individuals, especially staff members from anywhere, um, and remote to be able to log in and, and see what they need. Go Guardian, it's kind of like Big Brother-ish, you can then see at any time what a student is looking at while on the internet. Uh, Ames Web, that's benchmarking for reading, not listening. Uh, MIPA's is your multi-year purchase agreement. Um, Virus Ware, uh, things of that nature that we purchase. And then iReady, iReady is kind of the reading benchmark, uh, and it's pretty slick in terms of being able to, uh, utilize the data and then chart the progress. And then last but not least, the third party vendor for, um, telecommunications is really just the hotspots. You know, and right now, the district as a whole, we have about roughly seventy of those. So the three components plus the third party vendors. Mr. Holt, did I miss anything?
You didn't? I would say there's more detail in some of those if people want to see, um, because we get the, um, ed-tech final request statement. So all the services that were agreeing with ed-tech and then they bill through Genesee Valley BOSI's. So that's where sometimes the budgeting confusion is as far as how is Genesee Valley BOSI's will, will bill us through the ed-tech bill. The third party vendor fees, there's more of that. Those were specific examples of, of products that were used in, but there's probably twenty, twenty plus more, um, of at least instructional, like including like Microsoft licensing fees and, and those types of things that are all funded through BOSI's for ed-la two D compliance, but also for that eligibility factor. But we, um, we funnel as many of those costs to BOSI's as we possibly can.
That's evil, that's the, the financial thing. So what's the difference between, those are the items?
Yeah.
So seven eighty six is going to eight oh, eight fifteen.
Correct. With a change of twenty nine thousand.
Is there anything in particular driving that?
No.
Just increasing in the cost of the software?
Correct.
The servers, the controlling system, the network, et cetera?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And, you know, that's all aidable and things of that nature. And, uh, those are some things that I think as we really kind of get into the budget season, which we're in, but we're going to have to get super granular in terms of what we want to keep and what maybe we can go without. Any other questions?
Is it possible to get a, a, a breakdown of like what each of those components cost?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it's very detailed in the ed-tech final request statement, we're going to see exactly where those numbers come from. We, we can send that to people so they can look through.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
Thank you, Steph.
All right. Go to the next one.
Yes.
Something to get used to, so, um, you know, the, the students always come in and steal so much of my thunder for all the amazing things that are happening, um, in, in our school. But just wanted to, you know, just, um, touch base about the capital project and some other items. But just wanted to show that the steam space, um, we had our students in there last Friday using that space and, um, oh, you're going to build a play. Did you get to see? Kids in action?
Say we love the new team room.
So enjoying and loving the new space and we're, we're excited to have students in that, in that. Okay. So, um, we knew that one of the things that we were going to follow up with was our needs analysis after the last, um, capital project vote. So those meetings have taken place. We are still waiting for, um, our checks to summarize those results and, and get those back to us. Once we have the information compiled in a manner that we can present, we will then, um, share it at a board meeting as well as schedule a community meeting to share that information out.
I read the preliminary. Yeah. Comments and thoughts? And I, I didn't see anything earth shattering at this point, but fair?
I, I would say that's absolutely, um, accurate. Um, in fact, some of the staff members in the audience attended those meetings. And I would say that the faculty members that showed up were really dedicated to truly identifying needs and also being conscientious of how to, to lower the cost of the overall project.
Good.
Um, so for example, um, you know, Allison's here and we know the fine arts, um, i- is a big component. The fine arts really talked about, again, their, their major needs are.
Storage, lift.
Storage, lift, um, and a safer means of egress. And everyone, um, thought that the exterior entrance to the Performing Arts Center was beautiful. But is that a truly a need? And, and they said, you know, that, that they would just prefer a safer way of, of, um, entering and exiting the, um, auditorium if needed to use that, that door. So, um, as well as refinishing the stage floor, the way our auditorium was, you know, was set up, that you look directly down on the floor where most stages are higher and you don't necessarily see the floor. So working to, you know, develop a plan that would allow us to have a floor that works for concerts, but then also wouldn't be easily damaged for, um, plays. So that was the type of, um, conversation that took place in, in every one of those meetings.
And, and thank you to everybody who participated in that. Needed and appreciated.
Absolutely. Um, and then in our current project, at the end of the project, you have a continuity, contingency budget. And, um, just wanted to review again of the items that were included, that we have been spending down the items on. And they really have been necessities. I talked about the big chiller being rebuilt. Um, as you know, the windows in our building don't open. And so if we don't have a way to cool our building, we would be in danger of shutting down our, our classes and school, um, in July, June, when it gets, um, super hot and over summer school. Our elevator was something that was breaking down on a regular basis. So that was also something that we included in our contingency. And then many of you know that the access to the Field of Dreams was very difficult for anyone who, um, may use a walker, may just have difficulty, uh, mobilizing, walking up and down that steep driveway, or if they were in a wheelchair. And so we, there is a very bare bones, one bridge flat to a flat concourse. There are some additional bleachers, um, that would be at the top of the bleachers. Someone in a wheelchair, it's high enough that when they sit in a wheelchair in that concourse, if someone's standing in the back row, they can still see over them and, and see the field. So, um, at one point that, that bridge access had a lot of, um, I call decorative type items. It, it, it truly is an aluminum bridge. It's, it's bare bones, it's safe, it's, it's functional, it provides accessibility. So that, that was our goal.
So I think those are the items in part that are referring to item eight point oh three that I've asked to be pulled up for the time being. We're going to have a separate conversation on the items, the prioritization and the process. And I, we're hoping to have that later this week. Okay, so stay tuned on that. So we'll put it back in most likely, but at the, at the present time, there's no reflection on campus at all. It's just simply, I want to understand and review our internal process in terms of how those decisions are made. Okay?
As well as meeting with our fiscal advisors and our legal attorney for the process.
I've asked for fiscal advisors, our auditor and, and, uh, legal review.
And then every year we do a local capital, um, improvement project. And this year we've identified that there are significant issues with the track. Um, there are some sinkholes and then we need some heater and domestic water valves replaced in, in our school as well. Moving forward, um, one of the cost saving measures that Scott and I are considering is, is now moving forward with the local capital improvement project. So if you remember, the capital outlet project is the hundred thousand dollar annual project that you receive your billing aid on in the following year. So if we spend a hundred thousand dollars, we get seventy thousand dollars billing aid the following year. The local capital improvement project of a hundred and fifty thousand, we get that aid over fifteen years. So in, in tight budget years, it doesn't make sense to have that expenditure in our budget that we're only getting that minimal, minimal amount of revenue back. Um, we, we thought it was very important when we had the finances to do that, to try and build up that maintenance components. But we know that there are many more maintenance items in this building that we can, um, address in one year. But, um, certainly, um, preserving people and program is our, is our number one priority at this point. So, um, I let you know that last week, we were at, um, the superintendents in the area were in Albany. And, um, part of that conference is advocacy. So we actually meet with Senator Helming and Assemblywoman Marjorie Burns. And really, we, there are multiple things that we would have on our plates to go and advocate for, but we really try to be very succinct, um, in what we're asking for. We've been asking for them to fix the foundation aid formula. Um, you know, when you look at the amount of cost and, and increases of inflation, um, contractual costs that, that school districts have, healthcare increases. And you see that we get, um, two hundred and ten thousand dollars from state aid. In no way is that going to close that gap. So we're really asking them to fix the foundation aid formula. One of the things that Senator, or excuse me, Governor Hokel based her budgeting decisions on was if school districts enrollment is going down, they should need less money. And what we really tried to share with, um, Senator Helming and Assemblywoman Marjorie Burns is that, you know, whether or not we have seventy students in a class or, or fifty, we still have to provide those services. And what we're providing now is very different than what we provided years ago. Um, and you know, i- i- it sounds odd, but beyond educating our children, really in some components, we're raising children. Um, we're providing that social, emotional aspect and, and mental health services that they can't get any, anywhere else. We are making sure that we feed them breakfast and lunch every day. Um, you know, I shared when we had the water main break that a, a major focus to accomplish that morning was to make sure that everyone was fed lunch before they were dismissed. Because if, if some of those students don't receive that meal, that may, they may not eat that day. So really trying to share with them the, the struggles and, and what school districts are providing as far as services for our students. Um, and then of course, David, you know, we did, um, advocate for extending the deadline for bus electrification. No one is against re- um, green energy or trying to save the environment and do better in that way. But, um, some school districts have had their, um, infrastructure study completed. And so many of the school districts cannot complete their rounds, um, with the mileage that the electric buses have at this point. We know the RID can't supply the, the charging. So, um, you know, again, we're just saying, we're not saying we're against it, you know, but having an all or nothing and, 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 you know, be all end all deadline of every new bus under twenty twenty seven have to be an electric bus, isn't working for school districts. So those were really the two main components, um, that we advocated for and, um, stay tuned, we'll, we'll keep you updated. Um, as Brittany said, this weekend is Once Upon a Mattress. I heard it's going to be a wonderful show and I'm sure, um, Allison probably has to run out of here and go help out at the show. So, um, hope to see you there this weekend because as always, I'm, I'm sure it won't disappoint. We also have our superintendent conference day, it's the last one of the year that we are working on. Um, and, um, both the elementary and middle school teachers in different groups are really going to be working on trauma informed practices through, um, brain ar- architecture, um, really just talking about how different experiences in children's lives impact brain development. Um, in keeping with our strategic plan, we'll also have time for curriculum work. There'll be wellness activities and then therapeutic crisis intervention for schools for our elementary staff, um, as well. So looking forward to coming together with the staff, um, Friday before St. Patrick's Day. So we might have some fun activities planned for the breakfast, just to kick off our day in a fun, fun way. And then upcoming dates, again, we have the conference day on Friday. The play is this weekend, Friday and Saturday. And, um, elementary early dismissal is March twenty first and twenty second. I thought there was one more, there is. Spring break, March twenty ninth and, um, till April eighth. Solar eclipse day, so, um, any questions?
No.
Any questions for campus, they're here, anything?
No. Okay, you ready?
Okay.
Cool.
We can do tenure, uh, we can do rules of community that no one has.
Any questions?
And then we go over to.
Okay.
Tenure and then we can come back to our reports.
Thank you. Okay, guys.
Or skip over the.
Let's do tenure. Let's do, uh, item seven point oh two.
Okay.
Six first.
Okay. Okay, uh, I'd like to propose this resolution. Item seven point zero two on the recommendation of the superintendent, Amy Bookbinder, who has elementary childhood education, grades one through six. Elementary early childhood education. E to two was B.
Birth.
Birth to two. Thank you. Thank you. Students with disabilities, one through six, students with disabilities, early childhood, birth to two. Certification is hereby appointed to a tenured position in the special education tenure area effective September second, twenty twenty four.
Congratulations, Amy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Each. Okay, uh, item seven point zero three, I'd like to propose this resolution on recommendation of the superintendent, Catherine Edwards, who has elementary childhood education, grades one through six. Elementary childhood education, birth to two and literacy, reading teacher certification is hereby appointed to a tenured position in the elementary education tenure area effective September second, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Hey, questions and comments?
Okay, item seven point zero four, I'd like to propose this resolution. On the recommendation of superintendent, Michelle Dreis, who has elementary three K to six literacy. Reading teacher, birth to six of special education, K twelve certification. Is hereby appointed to a tenured position in the elementary AIS tenure area effective September second, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Okay. Last but not least, item seven point zero four, I'd like to propose this resolution. On recommendation of the superintendent, Scott Miller, who has school psychology certification is hereby appointed to a tenured position in the psychologist tenure area effective September third, twenty twenty four.
Scott is unable to make it tonight.
All in favor?
Sorry about that. And last but not least. Item seven point zero six, I'd like to propose this resolution. On the recommendation of superintendent Devon Mix, who has physical education, K twelve certification. Is hereby appointed to a tenured position in the physical education tenure area effective September third, twenty twenty four.
And just a couple of words, you know, everyone knows that school districts are struggling with hiring and retaining good quality teachers. And I am beyond proud to be awarding these teachers tenure September first because of the hard work and dedication. Obviously, they've only been here a few years earning tenure, but they are definitely a part of Geneseo, involved in lots of activities. Usually willing to do something goofy like cartwheels or jump the snake or something that, and then they try and rope me into it as well. But it truly is a testament to the people that, that are here and extremely proud of that group of young teachers that have joined us. So thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Some of you have known a little bit longer than a few years, so. Little bit.
And you're all welcome to stay. But you're also free. None of us will be offended if you literally run out the door.
It won't affect the tenure of the lead. You said nobody signed in?
No.
Nobody signed in? Point in finance, Greg?
Sure. We, we met at six o'clock. Scott and Bruce gave us kind of a forty thousand foot view of the, the overall budget. We talked about tax cap. And, you know, went through what we, we funded part of last, I mean, this current year's budget with reserves. And as everyone knows, with the way spending has, everything costing too much, unexpected expenditures, we're not really going to have anything left to refund those reserves. So, so we went through looking at a plan for the next year's budget to try to not draw on reserves because there's obviously a limit to that. And also along with that, talked about last year, we were able to go out with a, under the, under the two percent. Everybody knows the two percent tax cap. We were under two percent last year with our levy increase, not going to be able to do that this year. Our, our full cap is three eight ish. And that's what we'll, we'll have to go out at full full tax cap really to be able to make this budget work. So that's kind of a lot of what we look through. Yeah, that's it in a nutshell. Anything to add?
So next meeting, we'll get a chance to see the, what'd you say, thirty thousand foot view?
Yes.
Okay, at least the first best.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. Kevin, Allison?
Much easier than finances chat. So we've got a meeting coming up next week, the next, for the meeting, we got, we're in the five thousand area of the policies this year. Direction to a budget, budget structuring and things like that. So from the previous meeting, we got some policies passed. And then we have some on hold right now for review, waiting for those answers to come back. And there's a few that were redundant that we didn't need. I'll be sending out for lists of sharing tomorrow for the next upcoming. Policy numbers to look at at the next meeting next week.
Great, thank you. G C E F? All right. So Evan, to the best of you, so the renaissance of personnel.
All right, we'll pick up again. I'd like to propose that we approve item seven point zero seven through seven point one three. Second.
Just one, a couple of comments on my part. Good news that we have found a language teacher for both French and Spanish. So I'd be interested to hear if there's going to be any updates to the French portion of that at some point, but don't need that now. And then good news that we're finally appointing Jay Ballard to the role we hired him in. How many years ago did we hire Jay? I think it was seven, seven years? Okay, just. Any other comments?
Just seven point one three. That's the one I'm, I'm hoping you vote no on. It is.
Be happy to vote no on.
Intent to retire. It, you know, obviously, you know, you, you saw teachers at the beginning of their career and earning tenure and it's, it's hard to put into words all that Becky has done for our school, our families. Everybody knows her. She's had an impact in so many families' lives and students' lives. And when we talk about a hole to fill when, when someone retires at the end of twenty twenty five, those are really big shoes to fill. So.
Yeah. Cindy, thank you for bringing that up. It's, it's, this one's hard. I'm just going to put it that way. It's, this is not, you know, in this job, we all make some decisions. This is not one we like to make. I, I respect the fact what Becky's doing is I would with any teacher or anybody else retiring. Understand the decision, but gosh, hate to lose it.
Incredibly valuable person. And we're lucky to have had her for as long as we've had her. I just had a question. Yeah, absolutely. I have a question about seven point one zero. Is that P?
Yes.
Are so are the, the positions that we have, are they full time? They're year round positions, right? Other?
The summer school positions?
Nope. The existing.
Yes, this is allows her to also fulfill her administrative internship. For administrative degree.
Okay, good. Any other questions, comments? If all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Anybody opposed?
Under new business, we set aside item eight point zero three. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve item eight point zero two.
Second. Questions? All in favor?
Under business office, I'd like to make a motion. We approve items nine point zero two through nine point zero four. Second.
Questions on those? Check warrants? Pressure report? All in favor? All right. So.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want me to do it?
No, I'll, I'll do it, but. All right, so we'll have, we'll have discussion about it.
Yeah, let me, let me jump in. So I've added, asked this to be added to the meeting that we approved going forward, the broadcasting of our meetings. Zoom themes, whatever we ultimately use. I believe it'll be Zoom. Don't quote me on that. Okay. In a conversation I had with Cindy earlier today, we also have to support ADA compliance with closed captioning. Both in terms of the broadcast itself as well as the, the video recording that we put on the web. I guess in talking to John, I think when we, when we upload to YouTube, that does handle the, the closed captioning. And so it's incorporated. It's a voice to text kind of conversion. In the initial stage, I think we clearly owe it to our community based on some feedback we've received recently for the capital project as well as the ongoing budget season to begin to communicate and convey our business. I would request that we approve the, I think that's in the comments. That we approved this and not, I don't want to limit interaction, but I, I'm going to suggest that everybody who's going to be online, if they have a question, type it into the chat on Zoom. And if we can answer it that night, we can, we can review them at the end of the meeting and, and answer what we can. If not, we'll at least give an indication that we will come back by hopefully the next meeting to answer those questions. So I don't want to get into a lot of interaction back and forth in terms of debate, but at the same time, do enable everybody to provide, answer any questions and comments and so on. Any discussion on, any further thoughts, comments from any of you?
How does it work now? We record the meeting? And then it's available, what, the next day or two days?
I try to put it in later that week, David. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer, but basically there's no live interaction. So all we're using Zoom for is to record the slideshows, the dialogue, and then it gets uploaded to YouTube. That's the extent of it right now. Or if there's a board member that's not here, they have zoomed in. You know, that's the only.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
One of the suggestions that Joe Shields had was to continue with our current practices of our board policy that if a community member does have a question on an item on the agenda to email it to the district clerk, then we have a better record. He was a little concerned about having the comments typed into chat and keeping that record and keeping that straight and, and just moving forward. But that, I mean, that is certainly.
Is there going to be any monitoring of the chat? For appropriateness and.
So I think that's clearly something that in terms of any public feedback, I think we have to express that.
Right.
Yeah, I, I agree. Yeah, yeah. I mean, when I, certainly when I do it in my own classes, I also tell them, please clear your background and do other things that I advise.
Yeah. No, I, I, I think you know, when, when the board was doing this during the height of the pandemic, I think that the district had the most engagement from the community through that process. So I think it's, it would be good of us to return to that.
I think there's a lot of people who, for writing reasons, whether weather related or family related, you know, they can't necessarily be here in person. And I think we're, we need to continue to involve them as much as we can. All right. Any other comments?
So is there a cost to taking that away? Is it?
No, no. That's partisan. Okay. Or whatever. I guess I would reach out, anybody in the audience, comments, thoughts?
The only piece I would say is it would not only have to get monitored, someone would have to actively monitor it as the meeting's happening because there's a waiting room they come into first. And I would say that they should identify themselves first and last name in the waiting room and then they get let in, put into mute. I mean, people were very respectful when we did this before and I agree that that was the most engagement we had. So it felt odd to stop doing it, you know what I mean, at that moment? But obviously people haven't wanted to be back in person, face to face with everything. But to lose that piece, I think that it would put questions in. But I think that as long as it's monitored and then gets recorded afterwards. I do want to talk to someone about a, a different way to either set this up technically so it picks up the audio better. And when there's presentation, so we can talk about the physical layout a little bit differently. But I think we'd have to monitor the waiting room closely again.
Yeah, the closed captioning is really a voice to text. So if there's a lot of debate or dialogue at the same time, I'm sure it's going to get confused.
Yeah, it also doesn't do the best job.
It's like line up translation too.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, past practice before, it was clearly stated that if, if, if people had comments, something to say during the community, you know, they, they had to notate that just as if they were here in person. They had to do it by its time. So I think, you know, employing the same rules for those people virtually that are in person, you know, I think that would.
And we'll have to communicate to everybody as we did before, how, how they log in.
Is there any standard that they would agree to before we let them in the chat? Or let them in the, out of the waiting room?
You know, I think we use the generic verbiage from like the community piece and as like a disclaimer almost when they were coming in. And, and we added something about identify yourself in, in your profile.
Mike, thanks for bringing this. I know I have, I brought it up to you and I think it really is important to engage. I do want to say like, as a community person here, we have one time that we're allowed to speak. It's during the community, you know, unless you call on us. I don't really think you need to engage in making, in answering comments throughout the time. You don't do that here. It's not that kind of a meeting, but I think it just needs to be made clear. If you have something to say, you need to sign up ahead of time. And then comments that are made or questions will be directed to the board after. So it almost feels like you could even make that, I don't know that it even has to be a chat. You can, you can make it private, I would think. And so it can be monitored so that the board can address any questions later on. But in truth, you don't, and you know, we're, don't engage in things here. So I don't need to there either.
And I, I honestly would prefer if people just email them. Email the board their questions that they may have rather than putting it in the chat. I just, I think that would be.
Well, it causes them to be a little more thoughtful to not just at the moment, they heard something and off they go. They can stop and think about it and.
But, but our email is public record as well. It serves the same purpose. And then, you know, I think as a matter of, of business, I think we should have a old business category built into the meeting that we can address community questions from the previous meeting.
Okay.
At the following meeting.
That's my concern too. Is, is there any reason we need to do this tonight? In other words, can we postpone enough and, and add those procedures in there? In other words, if you want to.
We just documented them all.
If, if you want to speak. We're not going to exchange.
So I think we can. We can convey that just as it was sent to me. And provide that as a, as a foundational document to anybody who does connect by Zoom. For the first meeting, I can, I can take the time to read it all.
Yeah, it, it, it is simply just a meeting in public, but extending the wider public.
It is.
Of the web.
I really, as we get into the budget, I want the community to be able to hear the full budget. It really is, we get into the budget, I want the community to be able to hear the full budget discussions. I really do. Budget, capital projects, you name it.
Too, I think this is definitely a change for people, so it would be really good if on Parents Square or whatever community. Process we have to let people know that board meetings are going to be zoomed again and um, and actually that would be a great place to say. If you want to speak in the community service and the community relations, you can sign up. Otherwise, we're gonna direct questions via email to the board or something like that, but to say. Budget season's upon us, we wanna make this, I mean, it's such a great way to say, we've heard you and we wanna make things more public if you want to see them.
Yeah.
But I would put that out there wherever you can so that people know.
Yeah, looks like emails, Parents Square for those connected.
You've got in in item three that the superintendent developed practices. That could be part of that, you know, the the limits on, you know, we're not gonna have an exchange and um, you know, if you wanna comment. Email the question, um, come to the meeting, that would be good.
For those who can.
Um, so um. If we get in there, that and there, I'd be more comfortable with it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's preserving the meeting in public, not a public meeting.
Alright, so motion's made. Did I hear a second?
If you didn't, I'll say again, second.
Okay.
Or or maybe I'll say it the first time.
Okay, I'm not sure. Any other questions? All in favor?
Alright.
Hi, any votes?
Hi.
Thank you.
No, uh.
No executive?
If if I may, very briefly, um. We lost a a former Geneseo Central teacher uh recently. His name was Donald Avril. And he taught uh senior history at the old school. Um, I had him, he was a very fine gentleman. Um, the the year that I graduated, uh, he went on to administration. And uh, ended up as superintendent at Dundee Central School. For a number of years before he retired, he 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 passed away uh, uh, about a week ago. In uh Portland, Oregon. And uh, he was one of the best teachers we ever had and uh. I'm I'm sure we'll all miss him, and I just wanted to add that to the record.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. All in favor? So.